This is the August 20th, 6:30. Calls meeting order, vote call, everybody's here except Captain Rips or Councilman Rips. And under item A, discuss proposed budget for fiscal year 2014-2015, beginning October 1st, 2014 and ending November 30th, 2015.
Well, not exactly. It's the, I guess it's discussing the five month ones that you'll be talking about. Okay.
Yeah, what did you, what did you?
Okay. What I did first, I could not find an actual, when a budget is done, it's going to be set out in a certain way, the recovery page, and financial statements, and certain things happen. I could not find that anywhere. But I did find an ordinance where you all, that you adopted averaging, extending the budget that was already in place from when I left, and add five months to it to take it through September 30th. So, I got the one that I looked up, averaged everything over, with monthly, and just the monthly amount, I'll clarify at least figures. And that is what you see. Here's one, that's what you can see right here on the income on the first page. And the next page, next two pages, you'll see the expense column. Okay? See right here, Lynn? This one that says income, okay? That's what's on here. I took that from the budget. Okay? It's a 17-month that y'all adopted, okay? And so what I did is I expanded it out, so we could start preparing a budget to propose. This is not a proposed budget, where it's figuring out this one. And then, when we have a proposed one, we'll have to take it to the council again, okay? So, the first column is the budget, from the budget that y'all adopted, the 17-month one. Okay, the next column is an estimate of what actually was spent, alright? This first page is all income accounts. The second two pages are expense accounts. And if you look, the expense column is what was budgeted on both pages. And the estimated actual is what the records show that were actually spent, however they're not currently.
Wait, huh?
Huh? Well, that's what we're going to look at all these pages for.
Okay.
Okay? Does everybody understand that now? Is that part of it?
Yes.
Okay, did we give these out ready?
Yes. Yes, we all have ours.
Okay. And this, if you, there are some accounts that I felt like it was important to point out discrepancies, add-on income, that one is okay. From what I can tell, that one is fine. Copy, the copy thing should go into office, to the office account, okay? If you look at the credit card processing fee, that's a check marked one, you have to pay, should be.
Credit card, what'd you say?
Credit card processing fee, a check.
Okay, now I'm bothered.
You see where budgeted was 744, and estimated actual is 80,838? Something wrong there?
Ooh.
What that processing fee is, is the little fee that we're charged for using the credit card on shipping. And what I think they've done, they put the actual, like, the actual charge to the court for the ticket in there. See? But I'm not, you know, I'm not going to know until I get in there and look, and, you know, then I'll click on each one of these and make corrections. So that credit card processing is...
Wrong.
Yeah. It's actual, whenever, whenever they charge, you know, on the credit card...
Yes.
It goes straight to the, they deducted from the bank, there's a two those. And I think what they did is when, when the, when the Elbon company sent, this is what they deducted, they put the amount, instead of just the processing fee of $60, or, you know, $50, because it's a few cents on each one.
Yeah.
So, that's why it includes ticket.
And that's all this sugar, like...
That's all this sugar, that is about, maybe $60, not over $100.
Just the actual fee itself.
Mm-hmm. What it costs us to use the credit card.
So that is, is there a 5% if they charge?
Uh, what we were doing, the law allows you to charge up to 5%. And so, we set it at a flat fee of $4. And then, we didn't charge anybody that, if their, if their ticket, if their charge was less than $80, $80 unless, we didn't charge them anything for that. But if it was over that, we stayed under the 5%. And that was, he read the figuring there, because we were having to port all three computers for going in, was, you know, a lot to do, you know? And as far as I know, that's legal to do a flat rate, as long as we don't go over 5%. And then, building security fee, that's another one. Only 27, that's, that's somewhere else, and I think it's in technology, but I'll show you that later. You can tell it's very off balance, who has it budgeted and what's actual. And the building security fee is a fee that's charged on the ticket, and it can only be used for building security. So, the monthly alarm fee goes into that account, or if we bought something, you know, bought something that had to do with security here, you know, maybe the camera, a security camera, you know, something like that. Those can only be used, those accounts can only be used. That money comes in on that ticket, okay? So you can see, we, y'all pay 24-something a month for the ticket, that's not in there, doesn't really play that. And same thing with the municipal fee for the city. The city is to keep that amount of money that's charged on the ticket, some goes to the state, some states give the city. And we budgeted that we would receive $637, and it shows me we'll receive 20. That tells me, and which we already know, that when they're entering a ticket, they're entering the whole ticket in one place, under one thing, and not breaking it down to go to the different accounts that we used to be in. Okay? Then you get to municipal court title 7 fines. A title 7 fine is like, I think like a driver's license, or license plate, it's not like a legal violation, okay? And those are treated differently. That's why they're separated, under municipal court fines, they're separated because of that. The state differentiates them, and we differentiate them. And you can see, we budgeted $5900 to 76. And I'm thinking the ones that are here were probably entered in line still. That's what I think. You know, a ticket item?
So some of this in the 59, 50 was probably never entered into the actual.
They put it all under my son, probably under municipal court fines, okay? And then, if you look at check number two, you'll see where everything, when every ticket went wholly into that one account, it wasn't broke down, like I'm telling you, the all-in city broke down, you can see that by looking at the amount. And I don't know what this miscellaneous deposit, 4,900, I don't even know what that is. I can look and find out, but you, you can see what I'm saying, you can tell, that's not, you know, they're not broken down, each deposit. And it's for a long time.
We think that it says deposit, not what?
I don't know. You see, a credit card processing is, I don't know what they were doing, so I can't, and you see each one put it in differently. And some of them put the names of who the defendant is on some of them, but, oh, there's some of them remain. But anyway, you can see, in that, I just, I won't be able to see what, what's, we're up against, and getting it straightened out before we can do an actual budget. We may have to make our best guesstimate to prepare one, have it done on the deadline, because the tax rate has to be set before September 30th. And you have to have your budget adopted before you set the tax rate. You can go to the same meeting, you have to have a public hearing on the proposed budget, and you can vote on it right after that, and you can vote the tax rate right after that. But the budget has to be voted on first. So if they have a public answer to the budget, hour later have a meeting on adopting the budget and the tax rate, you know what I'm saying? But we're, because we're a small taxing unit, we don't have to do that many, as many hearings and publications. It does have to be published, the public hearing for the budget, it does have to be published, which is setting the actual.
So who posted all the flat counts?
Whoever was here, and I don't know.
Is it this, this is court, right? This is law court, right? I'm following.
Yeah. Everything, the CT, CST, TV, I put that in there, so I can vote to council court counts.
I got you, okay.
It was just a way for me to tell the difference in, so, okay. That's number three. And then, municipal court income. Do I have that on there?
That's number three.
I don't have number three. No, now that I know it. Oh, okay. Okay, there's number four. I've got two down. Okay. Municipal court income.
It's check three.
It's check three, alright? And that one looks like it's just more tickets, to me. Court deposits and tickets, and, so that it's divided, you see what I'm saying, it's still the same thing, it is...
It's all pooled together.
Yeah, it's all pooled together in three different accounts that are not in the right place to begin with, in any way.
You're going to need some help.
I'm so begging you.
Are you going to be able to do it?
I know it's going to take time, and that's why I'm just saying, you may have to do your best guesstimate on a budget for the next 12 months.
All you can do is take one account and work on it. And then, you don't have one, just work on another.
And I talked to Margie, and I talked to the auditor, and Margie and I had thought we're going to do each one separately, but I think I can do each deposit as a channel, you know? I'll figure out something that is going to take a while. So, number...
That pools, you know, and all that stuff.
Uh-huh, yeah. And then the next one, check number four, is special expenses. What that is, is when someone, a defendant asks for deferred probation, the court is allowed to keep, you can't, you can assess a fine, but you can charge a special expense fee that is no more than what the maximum fine would be, and the court contains all of that, and they're not doing that at all. If you look at, when they get deferred, they're just, I mean, they're not collecting any money for it.
They're not collecting on?
Well, they're collecting like, maybe with the, a minimum amount, so to say, if you're not assessing. I, I think what they might be doing is putting it in the fines, and it's not, because fines are split up, some in the state, some in special expenses, the city contains all of them. So if you look on what was budgeted for special expense fees, it's 21,750. And if you look at the 1889, look at check number four, look at the date, that's when I was still here in Iowa, for special expense fees. It is, you didn't mention that. You see those were the ones that, they were, and they're not putting anything in it, so I don't think they're collecting any. I haven't been able to look at the court stuff that close yet, but...
Unless it's going into another pot.
It, it's going into the pot of fines, whatever they are collecting on deferred is going into fines, because then it's, that you can't hold a fine, you know?
So we don't get to know what's going in.
Exactly.
The way, the way it's everything, what, Lynn?
I think they're not collecting it, but I think the way they were collecting was just whatever the amount of fine was on the, you know, there's a, kind of like a guideline of fines, and the judge can go down or up with them, with a maximum and minimum, okay? And I think they were just either reducing it, or taking the guideline, and sometimes I think they collected up to get the court cost, but soon you have to pay. So, anyways, that's that one. The technology fee, this, do we have a little technological gap in the budget? Did I? It's really bad to you. Oh, and I, you know what, I wrote out what it is. Technology fee, budgeted, that's another little fee that's charged on every ticket, that is supposed to go for technology, like one for the building is $4, and one for technology is $3, or vice versa, it's something like that, $3 on every ticket, every, and you can estimate how much that's going to be by how much is going through the court. So what was budgeted is $4,250. And what's on there is a negative 58. And when I looked it up, it's, it says, there's a charge for a firewall renewal for the server, and then some charges made by the city administrator to be reimbursed, but it came out a negative. So that's something that's got to be made up correctly, too. And I'm sorry, I didn't put that one, I guess I just...
Get another pen, Lynn?
Yeah? Okay. And then, on number five, they're not collecting any warrant fees, it doesn't look like, at all. And I don't think they're adding warranties when they, when they do file Omni, the Omni program. It's a, it's a, for failure to appear, when they fail to appear, Omni is the vendor that will, we, we report to them when someone has a warrant, okay? So we put it into the Omni program, and then DPS sends out a letter, Omni probably sends it out for DPS, that their license is going to be withheld until they take care of this ticket. And Omni charges $30 for every one. And I don't know that those fees have been added on there either, on the tickets, when they run them through Omni. I don't see that it has, the one time a guy came in and I opened it up to do it, there was no warrant fee on this ticket in, in the Omni program, and it wasn't on this case at all, and there was no $30 Omni fee, but they're paying Omni. Omni will send you a quarterly report telling you how many defers that you registered with them, how many, you know, warrants that you filed with them. And then, I always would hold those, when some, you know, you stamp the JAX DPS, so you know it's with Omni. And whenever you would, somebody would clear, I'd keep them together, and then compare it to what Omni was saying we had processed, because they don't give you an amount, they give you a number, like 14 convictions, 10 community service, four dismissals, you know, just whatever the disposition was. And I match them up, because sometimes they're wrong, and they charge us for dismissals, and we're not, we don't have to pay for dismissals. So, that's not being done, they're just, if the report says it, they're sending the money. And, so that's what's going on there. So that's why you don't see anything on warrant fees, so I don't think any have been added or collected, if they haven't, haven't been sent in the proper place. Then on franchise, it's a little bit of a... You have to check number five, okay? I will say that we just received a notice that a wire transfer from CPS, CPS Energy went in for 28,786, which I had already printed these out, I hadn't moved in the account yet. So that brings the estimated actual will change to 155,53. Now, remind me, this is a 17-month budget, we won't do that when we make the proposed budget, which is going to be a 12-month. But I have to show you this.
Also wired 28,000?
28,786, they wired to our account, it's in there, but like I said, I haven't put it in the records or added in here, just, I just got it emailed today. I know that G Florida did one, too, so... And this garbage shows for Matt Drive. What that is, is the garbage trucks couldn't get down Matt Drive, so the city pays for a garbage container to be moved into the street, and the residents that use it are supposed to be paying enough of a fee. And we do the billing for that, and the billing hasn't been done for that at all. And what it does is it counteracts the, if you go to your garbage service Matt Drive income, and you go to expense, it says garbage be ally. That's what the expense to us, to the city, is what we pay ally to put that container there, okay? And then, the, when I have Matt Drive, that's where they pay, they have, see, that's why it's off, you know, because they have, I think only one person has continued to pay, you know, I, yeah, just without, as far as I can tell, you know?
Not far back, I think it's a bill.
I don't think it'd be fair to go too far back, to be fair, you know? I, I would just start over.
Because we need to get on that.
Yeah. It's, it's like, like, it's not much for us, you know, probably $10 or less each month, it's not a lot of money.
Could we build in the line of August?
I would think, I mean, you know, they know it's due, they know that they're supposed to be paid, so whatever y'all want to do.
So we generate an invoice?
We generate an invoice, and when, when the bill comes from ally, we pay it, and then we, you know, try to keep up with who's using it, and they, we had it locked, and they each one had a key, you know, but then that didn't work, so, but, you know, we're kind of going on their honor, their word, who's using it, and, so, and we have each person on there, we send out an invoice every month, and they get behind sometimes, but we keep track, we'll send them what they pay, what they're behind, and, you know, but that's not being done either, but we'll get on that, too, as soon as we can.
What's fair to you, July, August?
Well, I think July and August, send them a bill for the July and August, you know, $10 each month for $20.
I think this morning, very...
And then we're just, try to stomach the rest of it, or not stomach it.
Yeah, yeah. So those come back is July 2014?
Yes.
Okay.
And that, and that is not too heavy a burden for them. And then, we'll just try and start doing, you know, when September comes, and you pay the bill.
Corissa did that. She and I would do it, whoever, you know, but...
Because you've got so much going on.
Yeah, I won't be able to do things on our...
I mean, it's not, it's not clearly, it's, you know, it's a...
But it takes some time, it takes some time. Alright, and franchise, we finished Drax and Phil's one, okay? And then, interest income, that's, that is what it is. This lady's income, that's a big one, look at that. It's check number six. And I honestly don't know what to do here, if you look at...
Actual crossing guard is in the field.
I know, that it went to school crossing guard, but it didn't, it didn't work like it's supposed to, because school crossing guard is later on there. Get check number eight. Y'all push that number eight. Oh, do I have it right?
School crossing, school crossing, yours is the other?
I mean X, X8, sorry.
No, it's the, if you're looking for the 103,000.
I'm looking for school crossing guard.
It's one A.
It's like check eight. Okay, look at the 103, it didn't, it made it a negative balance, so I, I mean, it doesn't make sense in either place, is my issue, because school crossing guard, school crossing guard, all the cities give, and it runs about, the check comes in, I'm going to say it's somewhere around $100, $200. So I don't know how in the world it got up to 103,000 in one year.
Because Wells had it down to $200, right?
Something like that.
Yeah? Because Wells had it down.
It was some, but, you know, and then I decided to take it off and put it into miscellaneous at one point, because it would come in, it says miscellaneous auto, and they used to call it school crossing guard, and the paperwork comes with it, says school crossing guard. So, that's got to be figured out, and I have no idea how that happened.
The general ledger, did they give us the name?
The, the general journal entry is wrong.
It's wrong.
It's very wrong.
That's what it is. I've got some more that were, I don't know.
I don't know why they did it.
Okay, then sales tax, check seven. That's, they're kind of so much different in the different months, I don't know what, like the one this month was 28,000, that's coming in. Of course, it's big because of the 17-month period that we're looking at, but, just let y'all see it. I think they might have some other, there's an adjustment there, I don't know what that is. But it's, I guess it could vary like that with the times, you know, with how much people are spending. And, you know, I wonder if the 28,000 includes the new tax that y'all approved? Did you look at it, Lynn? I didn't look at it.
I mean, I'm looking on the website.
You said you did. But that's an awful large check, 28,000, look. Look at the different entries there. So, maybe they did, by the time they made up the budget.
I mean, I mean, I'm going, you go to Windows, State Department, and you look up what the sales tax rate is, oh, and you start at 75.
Well, they may be collecting it, though. They may not change it on their, I don't know, 28,000 is a lot different, a lot more than anything else on that.
And I forgot what the length of time is from when the election is to when the election started.
That they charge it, yeah.
And I'm like thinking that they started in this next quarter, but we need to find out, that's all.
Okay, check eight, we're going to pass, because we're going to look at this completely. Now we can start with expenses. And those are going to have X. Animal control expense, you don't have one, you don't have a sheet for it, but I'll tell you, the 8330 included labor for Linda, travel experience, vet bills, dog food, all of that stuff was in there, and for a 12-month period, it was spotless in the end of the year. And I understand, I don't know, you know, I know she got paid some, because I can see it in the other account, but that's just a, that 2398 just reflects like some dog food and some, a number of things there.
Vet expenses?
Yes. Vet expenses.
She didn't work very much.
Yeah.
So, in her opinion, vet expenses are what?
I thought it's all we had, maybe it's...
That may be, that may be, and, but that, when it was budgeted, when it was budgeted and somebody ran vet expenses in her travel, okay? And then, the audit, that's just taking the 5800 that, you know, was the contract for 12 months, and I just averaged it out for the 17-month, and it's a 250. And I did talk to the auditors, and they're going to send another contract for y'all to vote on for the next meeting, which will include the, they're going to audit the whole 17-month period, that they're going to ask more money for it, and I don't know how much yet, I just did this, because it was what y'all budgeted. So, that's what that is. Auto fuel is all police department, and should be in the police department expense account, because we set up the account for them, and their pay is in one account, and all their expenses are in another, so the radios, the car repairs, the fuel, uniforms, anything else, and that's all scattered into different accounts, too. But that fuel is going to go to PD. Insurance is, that's it, insurance? On the property? No, it's on cars, it's, I don't know why it's not counted insurance, but I just noticed it was a DML insurance thing. Service is $6 for tires or something, that's PD also. Bond expense, I just, it's minus 50, and Jean's is 92, and his has been paid, but it's somewhere else in here, it's not in the bond. And then building security, you see, has nothing, that's an account they put on there. But we've got it already under the CTCST program now, anyway, so that's why it will just be deleted from... So the, the first X is...
Does it need to be separate, though?
It is, I already have it in another account, that CTCST, a little further down the numbers.
But that includes other things, too, right? CTS, CT, CTC?
We put all of our building security in the court.
So we can just delete that one, because this is...
We're going to just delete that.
This is sold by itself now?
Yeah, they, they never put anything in there either, I don't know why that's on here, because I always had building security, you go to the court expense. You know, pretty much all of the budget funds, like office supplies and stuff like that, that's for the court, the police department, the, every, every part of the city operations, you know, the office expense, if they need paper, they need, or we need, or the court, it's, it's too hard to separate who's using how much paper, so that's another one thing, most of it is. And, anyway, so you go to city hall building, I never had it headed like that, on the budget I had it under property maintenance and supplies and... And it looks like, you can see, it's some supplies, some office supplies, some electrical work, which electrical work would go under there. And, uh, it looks like, uh, you can see, it's some supplies, some office supplies, some electrical work, um, which electrical work would go under there. Uh, cleaning, um, I don't, you know... We need, we need a balance, security down at the bottom, that's for sh- security, um, you know? So, anyways, but there's also, if you look further down below X eight... That's, that's, uh, the actual amount that was budgeted for property maintenance and supplies, where they got it all in the two accounts, and it's all his. So those, that seven thousand eighty would be the actual amount that would be budgeted for both, that seventy-one seventy-four that was spent on City Hall Building... And the sixty-three seventy-eight, so you can see that goes way over what would've been budgeted for a year, for mowing the lawn, maintaining the cross of the building, and stuff like that. So those two figures are gonna have to go together, what is that, thirteen thousand over a little? At the bottom, maintenance, all his property. Um, okay, so, and I, uh, whenever, uh, you know, when I was here, Jim would blow every week, or he was, you know, we'd kind of, it didn't rain, it didn't grow, and... So I don't know, you know, if it didn't need it, or if we needed him to come for some reason, trees down, you know, but, um, I don't know what we're doing now, so... So that's X one, and then council salary, X two.
Can we go back to the second, the X one here for a second? Two things here were, uh, down there, close to seven one, S O S Environmental Services there, that's where we had the, uh, Surline, that Surline. Those two files.
Yeah. Yeah, so those look like they're a little bit more, if you, or you have, so that would explain some of the increase in that in your budget. But the thing about your budget, y'all remember this, when you adopt it, you're adopting the bottom line. So if some things need to move around, they can, like, if you didn't spend as much in one account, and you spend more in, say, this account, as long as the bottom line comes out, you're not open that, without having to...
And, and the electrical line that I remember was only signed up for.
It's, it might have been, but it also moved the thermostat, we need it back in there, it's not operating well, that office does not recruit at all. It, it's been moved by the water fountain, and so it's picking up this one, and you have to turn it down to about sixty-something to get any kind of air in that office at all. So we come need to move that back, um, and I know it was behind the door, but, uh, I remember talking to Tommy Bieber, did that, he did the, the R S D for the...
Yeah, and he, he was up there to check out, because we had a problem with the drainage line, which stopped it for a while.
Stop it, yeah.
That's why Bieber was there.
Yeah. I think you're supposed to delete to know if they're gonna have to clean or clean or something. Okay, so that, that explains a little bit of it. X two, council salary is, um, in the budget that, uh, is on here, is, is included in the payroll admin, when it's budgeted. If you look on the next page, X nine, or one hundred and twenty thousand, is, uh, what was budgeted for that. That would include the council salary and a lot of other people, and if you just look on this chart here, you'll see, um, what I'm talking about for the amount. We'll get to X nine in a minute, I just wanted to, and the other thing about council salary, um... I know that when they done here, this last year is paid to all contract labor, just a flat, you know, check. And that's how we always did it, with the judge, prosecutor, and attorney, and everyone. Uh, IRS did another audit, they had done one, oh, I don't know, ten or fifteen years ago, and they came back and did another one. And, um, in that audit, he determined that, uh, we have to treat council and judges and prosecutors as employees. But there's a state law that contradicts that, the state law says a judge cannot be an employee of the city he works for. And we argued, you might remember that, because you run the council, you know, arguing and arguing, went round and round, and tried very hard, and called other cities. And what I found was, other cities that had been audited, were also doing it to be called as an employee. But the ones that weren't, wanted to know, let, they said, let me know what happens to y'all, you know, so, uh, and, and, uh, the IRS sent us a, their rule on it, and we had the initial, that we would start treating council members, judges, and, uh, the prosecutor as employees. And so that's why it was done that way, it's a little more trouble, but, um, that's what they want, you know? And, uh, the, you know, the attorney, the city attorney was the only one I was able to not, you know, to, there was a rule in there, it was in the hand, it was, in the, in the federal law, so the federal state law was contradictory.
Thank you, but, but the weight, we haven't just figured it, that's just gross.
It is gross, but that thing was deducted, there were checks that were written down there.
They need to be.
Yes, it was.
I don't think it was.
Well, we'll look, maybe not.
I don't, I don't think they were, I don't mind, but...
The one you got this time, you treated that as an employee?
Yeah, it was true, we were all true about it.
Did y'all remember having a deduction?
I don't know.
Oh, you got one?
Yeah.
You got, you remember? Cause I wasn't on the train.
As far as I know, it, it was, because I had a rich, my income tax. I would never, may not have...
Cause we had a lot, this was written on twenty-fourteen, last year it was, because Susan was still here, but now this year's when we got it, did you have taxes deducted?
Oh, totally. Yeah, but I put it in there, it's in there. It, it was... I, I remember having to put it in there, I put it with my tax stuff. So I, I think, I think so.
Yes, for twenty thirteen, for twenty thirteen, taxes being...
I have one now.
She hasn't existed in five decades, but you're saying...
Oh, oh, you put it in your tax file on twenty fourteen?
Right.
Okay, did you remember for this deduction?
It probably was.
You had so serious, you had carried it up, it probably was.
It probably was, it's like seven bucks or something, I think.
But can you, but see, your check would not have been written for three hundred dollars, Dave, your check would've been written for something else, and payroll...
But this is, but this is...
It is a gross, it is a gross amount.
Yes, it's a gross amount.
Okay, that's right, for the accounting.
And, and then the liabilities, you're...
Just in the check amount, and...
It should, well, it says payroll, so I have a feeling it, it was, if we pull it up, it's one time show, the just...
Okay, well, just make sure you do that, and then, that, do that now. But the total definitely doesn't belong in just the council salary separate, because it was budgeted in the payroll administration budget, so, and we'll work out that other, um...
Yeah, when you go to, to try and correct it to the proper account, uh, you can then, you'll be able to see whether it's got right down.
All right, uh, then, credit card fees and charges, um, that's what they charge us. We pay them to use it, and, and, I don't know, that's okay, it's about the same. Building security expense is X three, and X three eighty. Okay, budgeted for us to spend on building security was the twenty-four, um, twenty-four month, okay? So we budgeted seven hundred and ten, and it looks like it's a negative fourteen forty-eight. And if you look at, um, the audit, the general journal entry at the bottom of X three...
I don't know what they did.
See, and it's been very tight, um...
Gene, you know what they did? They gave them the complete entry, except they didn't post it back in, in the proper year, and so it's going against all these incoming expenses accounts, instead of going against the current account. It, it's in the wrong year, it got posted in the wrong year.
It's in the wrong year, and I think probably in the wrong, um... I don't know, what was...
I, I lay odds, if you combine your audits, adjustments, you need to change the date to be four thirty twenty thirteen, not twenty fourteen.
No, I would think, I would think that's right, because we would not have that much of a difference in, in that one year, it wouldn't have been that much.
No, there was some, some reason that they...
They should, building security sixteen ninety-seven, and technology.
Well, technology, and this may have been posted through our account, but what I'm just getting at is, everywhere you will see an audit and a journal entry, I'll lay odds the date on it, well...
Somewhere, so...
Yeah, but, but, you see, we haven't had an audit for April thirtieth twenty fourteen yet, that's what's coming up. This should've been for the, for the fiscal year beginning, April thirtieth twenty thirteen, audit adjustment.
But I'm telling you, they made some, they made some that weren't done by the auditors.
Well, yes, yes, I'm sure they have, but this one is an audit adjustment, and I'll lay odds, when you see audit in the journal entry, it should be a twenty thirteen date.
But I say, I still think the amount is wrong, the amount is wrong, because there wouldn't be that much in building security and building, I mean, uh, technology. Because of the fees and how much you collect, if you look there, okay?
And, and looking at it too, you've got ninety-sixteen.
That's, see, that's wrong.
Yeah, so they, yeah, they put it to...
They put it in the...
It's all wrong out of that. And, um, then, where are we at? The court costs, okay, this is, um, this is court costs they pay to the state, sixteen thousand five hundred and seventy-nine. And, like I said, I have no idea that they're right, because what, um, what they were doing is they're pulling up a report off of the court software encode, and it tells them what, you know, what, um... What the court, the state court fees do are, but nobody's balancing it and checking it with anything else, and sometimes you have to do that, because the failure to appear, um, is different on two of the, two of the reports, so... So I don't know if that's right or not, but if you look what was budgeted, there's nothing budgeted for that, it's in another place.
That, uh, X three eighty, what's it go to that, because it comes up to a plus sign?
It goes up at all.
That's everything's fine, I'm out.
So they, this is the audit, so they've probably made a mistake altogether.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, the whole thing, the whole thing is wrong. And the day might be, you know, that would be too, because they did that on another one for elections, I think I showed it up for one of y'all. And then if you go to, um, the municipal court expense, X four, eight thousand four hundred and seventy-six, and we didn't budget anything for that... Because the biggest expense that the court has is paying judges and prosecutors, and that was also included in a separate, uh, account, probably got one twenty if I remember right. It was budgeted as a total, and it seemed to me it was about eighteen thousand dollars, because it was paying the judge and the prosecutor six hundred fifty dollars a month for twelve months, okay? And then I added another thousand or two thousand, because when we hold jury trials, and they're here all day, and sometimes into the next, they got one in six hundred fifty, six hundred fifty was for their, their afternoon court arrangements, but jury trials... And we didn't, you know, we would have at least one or two days a year of jury trials, I tried to hold it down to one, and I haven't had any since, I think, twice a year. Yeah, anyways, you don't make money off of them, why do you mean, even jury trials, but you have to have it to, you know, to show that you're serious too, that your staff isn't gonna just let you get off, you know?
Just cause they requested it, you think they get out of it?
Right, mm-hmm. Anyways, um, so that, um, X four, that figure needs to go somewhere else too. And if you look at X four, you can see that, uh, some of it is office supplies, you look at Omni Base, that's a, a court, state court fee, um, Jennifer Diaz for mileage, there's some office, some PD, some state court costs, some training, some mileage. Um, Fred Pryor seminars, Omni Base to begin in there, and then paying John Jenkins, I guess, to go, uh, execute warrants, that should be a police department expense for his labor, not a, uh, not a municipal court expense. Um, then Daniel Rutherford, that should be under the, uh, that would normally go under the payroll admin, that we had budgeted for judges and attorneys, so, that would be... This tax, uh, we always budgeted to pay their county, but did they ever start building off of that?
They sent us a bill, and then they said, we're gonna change it, we're not gonna do it, but I haven't seen a refund.
Well, that's what they've been saying for three years.
And they send, when they actually sent us the bill, like, two thousand dollars left, so it went from like eight something to six something.
But I kept putting it in the budget, because they kept saying they were going to, and I'm gonna do that.
They did, and we paid them.
And now they withdrew it.
And, and, and they, people started complaining, so they said, well, we're gonna look at it again, but I haven't seen the money come back. Take care of it. But now, you know, how many, he, he...
But we did pay that one.
We paid that one.
I remember a little of us...
It must be someplace, because it's not showing up, it's, it's somewhere, so, yeah, it's probably a deposit or something, and, um...
And see, it looks like, yeah, like nothing else. Well, I think, was I averaged, of course, the eighty-three hundred that I had done for the twelve hundred, add the five percent down. All right, then donations, dues and donations, and dues and subscriptions should all go to dues and donations. And if you look at the total, those three, the eight hundred, the six fifty, the two thousand seventy-four, you're gonna get about what was budgeted for that, which I'll budget, so... They just split them up into different places, and it's, you know, the, the, it comes with some of those items in there already, and you, you know, I just felt like dues and donations was a good place to put all of it, since we don't have that much.
Right, so to keep...
So that's another thing that'll have to be adjusted, and if you look at, uh, oh, back to technology, I'm sorry, X five. Um, and if you, what I see here, if you look at check, the first check on there, the second one, forty-five eighteen, okay? That check was written January twenty-fourteen, seventeen eighty-one ninety-three, to Tyler Technologies, and what that is, is, uh, the court has to pay, uh, that's the encode, court, court software system, Tyler Technology sells it... And you have to pay them an annual fee to update the software, and they'll answer questions, if you have a problem, and we, you know, you can call them and get, uh, computer tech help, they'll help with that, you know, they do a lot for that. And it looks like a, a check was made in, uh, December twenty thirteen, I guess the next check, a forty-five sixty-three. One of them was dated January first, and one was dated December, okay? And then again, like I said, the reversal, um... It's in short, came out, so I made a note here, the general journal entry reversal, voiding check forty-five eighteen, if you look at it, it put it back in. You see what I'm saying? And it's a different amount, so, I don't know, when I left, it was about thirteen hundred dollars a year, and I'm sure they've gone up, you know, but... So you're actually, it looks to be, like, being charged part twice, and then again, with the journal entry, another amount. Unless that's, it, because in the general journal entry, it said reversal, voiding check forty-five eighteen, but they didn't void it, they actually added something to it. You see what I'm saying? Because I added this up, and if you add it all in there, that's what it comes to, and, um, and then that other one, they do something, so it's very good.
Well, thank you, Susan, you need to find out if check forty-five sixty-three is still outstanding, cause it, that bill was made twice.
But I, you know what I think, I'll check and see, it may still be outstanding or something, I didn't look at that, I was trying to just get rid of it. But I bet if they did, they checked it, they're gonna keep it for the next year, I don't know, they may have refunded it, or they have been voided, yeah. But if it was voided, it doesn't show in here.
It's not showing it's being voided, but you need to see if forty-five sixty-three is still outstanding, cause they said forty-five eighteen cleared, from the, that you got written in December. And apparently somebody didn't realize, and maybe another statement came, cause it was a little late, and it's...
It'd be saved again, now.
And saved again.
And I didn't look at that, I did look at both checks to see the dates they were written on, and, uh, let me see if it was clear or not, cause, uh... But, then, um... Okay, uh, the next one is education, that doesn't have anything budgeted for it, and nine, there's the, uh, yeah, there's education, is it, no, okay? Uh, there was nine hundred and seventeen dollars spent on it, and you have a printout of what it was, um, and, um... That's, you know, it, it is what it says, but some of it needs to go in the police department, some of it needs... some of it needs to go in different places, um, you know. See, that A P O is probably a police training Jenkins and that's all, should be in the police department budgeted. Twenty-three thousand budgeted for them, so that ought to be corrected to you. And then um, election expense, uh, X seven. It looks like we budgeted nine thousand two hundred and ten, do I have something like that? It didn't bug, I don't know. No, the election expense is a seven thousand eighty. What that is, is um, we always budget five thousand for the election and this is the five thousand for one year plus the extra for five months, brings it to seven thousand and eighty. And it shows the actual expense, eleven fifty-nine, however, that is deceiving. If you look at X ten.
Uh, Susan, I need to, you got nine seventeen under education and that should be under election. You flip flopped your two lines for actual.
Did I?
Yes. So nine seventeen should come down and eleven fifty-nine should go up to education because election expense is showing nine seventeen. So you flip flopped your two numbers, so that it's uh, six or five, six. Six is under education, you're showing eleven fifty-nine, but under education, you're showing nine seventeen on your...
Oh, I've got election here, I'm sorry.
Yeah. But you see, this, this number should be down on this line.
This is...
Okay. Okay, now, let's see now, we'll add the education then. And it is...
It's like you were talking about, education, there's nothing, but yet we have eleven fifty-nine.
Eleven fifty-nine as expense. Then, okay, and nine seventeen on the election.
Yeah.
Okay, and our education thing shows that.
Which should have gone in various other...